I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, Monday, April 15, 2024. Work sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Like regular meetings of council, citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings but do allow for public comment at the end of the work session unless otherwise called on by council. Please note, speakers are limited to three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session other than to vote to place an item on the council meeting for consideration and official vote. Council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken and posted on the town's webpage following approval of council. I will now call the meeting to order. Are there any deletions of items on tonight's work session agenda? If not, our first presentation tonight is from Bill Shanahan, a donation to Lexington Police Department Foundation from the 2024 Chili Cook-Off.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. With me, of course, is my wife, Vicky, and our team, partners in this Chili Cook-Off, John and Kelly Klinger, the owners of the Old Mill Brew Pub. Between the Blowfish and the Old Mill Brew Pub, it's hard to believe that we just completed our 10th Annual Chili Cook-Off at the beautiful Ice House Amphitheater. We started it back in 2015 because John, John had a vision. He had lived in Pennsylvania and had started a Chili Cook-Off up there and he, he wanted to bring it to Lexington. So we joined together and we have to say it's been quite a success being here in Lexington. So, John, I'll let you say a word or so.
Thanks. We left the Pennsylvania people up north, though. We started running down here. We left it in good hands, though. It's up there. But I want to thank the community of Lexington and definitely appreciate everybody who helped us at the amphitheater. Walker Brewer, of course, my wife, and all of y'all, thank you for helping us put this on. So we look forward to many more years. Thank you.
I was asked, do we have a check? And we do have a check today. And we'd like to present that to the Town of Lexington Police Department Foundation. And are they here to be represented? I was also asked, did we bring the big check this time? And I thought, well, you know, that's kind of showy to show that off. And it was like, oh, you didn't bring it. So next year, we'll bring the big check, Cameron, okay? But this time, we have a check that actually you can cash.
We like small checks, big numbers, Bill.
Well, let's, here we go. Now, this is a team, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you mention about being a team and how much fun you had?
We, this is my first year doing it as the head chef using my recipe. It was a blast. We had six of us doing it. We ended up getting seventh place in the traditional chili. So that was good. And we planned to take it up from there. So it was a great time, though. We had a blast, so.
That's awesome. All right. Well, I, we'd like to present this check, but I do want to say thank you to our, our team. And our team, of course, is John and Kelly, and Bill and Vicky, and all of you in the Town of Lexington. This is an absolutely unbelievable, wonderful place to live. And we're just, we're just honored that we can help enhance the quality of life for our families in, in our community. So God bless you all and till next year.
Bill, thank you for all y'all do. It was packed. I mean, you were barely moving around. It was so many people. It was great. It was a great event.
Thank you, Mayor. And we, we actually, today, we're presenting a check to the Town of Lexington Police Foundation for $6,000.
That would be our chief back there.
Minus the commission for the council. But we also presented a check on behalf of John and Kelly to Camp Chemo for $1,000. So we always try to find some other charitable organizations that need help. And we have some exciting news with the Blowfish coming, coming down the pike here that we'll be sharing with you soon as we celebrate our 10th anniversary in Lexington as well in 2024. All right. Cameron?
I got the chief. Bill, I wanted to tell you too that I go to watershed and our church starts advertising the Chili Cook-Off about a month in advance. I made chief holler. Thank y'all so much.
Hey. Great parade. Yeah, same. Yeah, same, ladies. It was great.
Now, we're going to be moving on to our items of business. Our first item in business is from downtown venue promoter, Walker Brewer, Ice House Amphitheater Policy Update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm attached to find the vendor policy for the Ice House Amphitheater. The change in that is editing the power and fee section for the food vendors. I ask that y'all consider this to place on the May council agenda for approval.
Tell us what it is, Walker.
So essentially, the major change was we adjusted the fee to give us some flexibility in the fee instead of one set fee. And then we listed the power, the power listing in there was from originally before the pavilion was built where we were limited on one circuit per vendor. Now I can provide up to like four circuits per vendor or 50 amp. It also doesn't allow generators unless approved for noise and air pollution reasons.
Mayor Prochey makes a motion. Do I hear Sackett? Councilman Smith, Sackett, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Certainly can. First thing tomorrow morning. Sir? I'll email that first thing tomorrow morning. Oh, no, I get it everybody first thing in the morning.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Our next item of business is from Town Administrator Rachel Cleaton, and I am very excited. This is about the Town Communications Improvements, which is on our list.
Yes, Mayor. I'm just going to go ahead and stand up here since I have the rest of the agenda and I'll walk you through the various items that we're going to cover. I will bring Jack up for one point, so you'll get a break from me. In January, when Town Council set forth their 2024 priorities for council, a few of the items that rose to the top were related to communications and community engagement. And January 23rd, as a matter of fact, we realigned a number of existing town employees into a public relations team or committee, you'll use that term interchangeably. So in the past 90 days, in addition to performing their regular daily tasks and special projects, they've been working to put together a series of policies for you all to consider and adopt. They've done research on technological equipment that we can purchase to utilize for better communications, and I'm here to share that with you today. So we brought together multiple employees. We have a core group that really serves primarily as the PR committee. It's led by our economic developer, our communications manager, our marketing assistant, and our digital technology specialist. We've also included the municipal clerk, our downtown venue promoter, our GIS analyst, our police department PIO, and much of the equipment that we borrow from them, and our assistant to the town administrator. So it is an ever-evolving committee of folks that come together as necessary and folks that will step out when they feel like they don't have anything to contribute. It's been a nice fluid process. Move my notes up here. So as I mentioned, their first meeting was less than 90 days ago, and so much has been achieved. They have not only audited all of our communication engagement strategies, but they surveyed town residents and stakeholders. They have prioritized areas of improvement from no cost, quick fixes, things that we can implement fairly quickly, as well as planning and pricing out some of the larger technological pieces, which you'll hear about later tonight. We have digitized FOIA tracking, and we're working on standardizing the information dissemination process. You'll hear more about that tonight. We've prepared a communications plan that establishes our goals and standards. This also includes a social media policy and a brand standards guide. We're currently undergoing a website redesign that actually was happening already, but it's dovetailed quite nicely into this PR committee as well as the transparency efforts that we've undergone. We're excited to share our new transparency center that will be online. The new website will launch in mid-June. I've had an opportunity to take a sneak peek. It looks great. It's streamlined. It's modern, more white space, easier to find things. And last but not least, they've researched and evaluated other types of web or text-based communications methods to include an app because we know that was important to council. Most of the technology enhancements that we'll talk about tonight, pardon me, all of them actually are related to our web provider, Civic Plus. They also offer an app. At this point, we're still looking into it. It's our understanding it might not be the best product for us, and we want to make sure that we have the right thing for us. So we will provide that for you at a later date. So what I'm asking you for tonight and then in a subsequent meeting is to review and approve our proposed communications plans. Jack will provide you that information as well as allocate resources for our new communications So I want to talk technology first. There is a presentation that was put together by Michael and by Lauren. These two really took the lead in doing the research and putting all of this together for you. So because of their location, it's a little bit more difficult for them to present, but you do have a microphone, so I'll lead. They can jump in. If you have questions, please ask, Michael and Laura. So we have a technology communication improvement presentation for you. Like I mentioned, all of the items we're going to discuss today are supported by our current website provider. Option number one that we have is called Next Request. This is the online FOIA system we've been talking to you all about. And so what this does is allows the FOIA request submission and response process to be 100% online through our website. The person who is submitting the request is able to track where the, where the request is, with which department, how long it's been with that department, and then equally on the backend, we can see that, too. So we can have one person coordinating and routing where the items are supposed to go. We can set up reminders for ourselves based on state law of when we need to provide responses, et cetera. I'll also mention that this is publicly searchable. So if you know that someone has already asked about a particular item, you can go to the section of our website and look up a specific term, for example, financial statements, and it will return everything that's ever been requested, and you'll be able to open those documents. You may find that you don't need to FOIA. You may just be able to pull off the documents there. These requests, then, are archived, and it also is helpful for staff because if we get a similar type FOIA request, we can simply tap into what's been provided, issue it to someone, and ask if they would like additional information. There's a number of other communities throughout the state that use this. I believe in particular Spartanburg uses it and they enjoy it. There is a community that's not listed on the slide, but I would encourage you to visit Albuquerque. Their website is tremendous. When it comes to their next request, they put everything online so you can see full All of the items that we're going to talk to you about tonight, we will be telling you the cost for implementation. Our request would be that we fund this within the next couple of months. There would be a one-time activation fee for each of these items plus an annual cost. The one-time activation and the annual cost, we will subsequently in another meeting request out of available funding of this budget. We then will not have to budget again until FY '26. We pay a year in advance. The next request system is a $1,500 one-time payment. Annual is $12,586. I'd like to point out, this is applicable for our police department as well, and PD is familiar with this system. So Michael can show you an example of what it may look like. City of Asheville, for example, has a listing, if you were to go to their Next Request page, of how you may find certain FOIAs. Are there any questions about this?
It showed a savings on the previous slide of $3,100. What is...
Thank you for asking about that. If we are to implement this prior to July 1st, we are being offered a discounted rate.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So if we were to wait until July 1st or our next budget year, that would be the increase in price. We are also getting a bundled price, just like our car insurance, home insurance, et cetera. We're already getting a discount because we currently use them as our web provider as well. Brad is highly familiar with this program and in fact referred us to it. It's just a benefit that it's the same as our web provider. Any questions? Okay. I'll move on. Number two, Monsidio. This is an option for us to improve ADA accessibility for our website. We currently meet minimum standards for ADA accessibility, but this takes it to the gold What this does is it makes sure everything throughout our site is working properly. It notifies Michael, our webmaster, if, for example, there are any links that are broken or if something violates a minimum ADA accessibility. There is a full suite solution based on everything that we would like to implement ourselves. And the cool thing is, is it provides people the opportunity to customize the website based on their needs. If you go to the next slide, Michael, I want to show you an example. So you can see here, if this were to be our website, you see the picture, but then the personalization options. And this is a pop-up that you get to. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a symbol of a person. If you were to click that, this pop-up shows up and you can choose the font size, text spacing, visual, anything related to quality. So like I said, this is above and beyond the minimum standards for ADA. This has a one-time implementation fee of $500 and annual fee of $7,000. I'll defer to Michael if you have any questions specifically on what this does, but according to him, this would ensure that everyone in our community would have the most access to the information on our website, and we offer a little bit more than the minimum. Okay. Our third option is Archive Social. So this really is a behind-the-scenes type of function. The town has, the town and the police department has numerous social media sites from Facebook, X, Instagram, LinkedIn, you name it. Well, the social media records are our public records as well. And at any point in time, we could be FOIA'd for things that have been posted to our Facebook pages. This includes things that we have posted ourselves. This also includes comments that people make on social media as well. If we were to be FOIA'd, let's say for something posted two years ago, it would be our responsibility to produce that. We couldn't simply say, just go to our Facebook page and find it. What Archive Social does is it allows us a quick retrieve, not only for the records that we know of, but it allows us to search records that may have been edited. So the town can edit posts as we see fit. It's highly rare that we do unless there is a fact that needs to be adjusted or a very odd event of an inflammatory post by someone that the town, per its regulations, will delete. But also comments from residents. They may make an inflammatory comment and then go back later to delete it. Archive Social ensures that everything is documented and we're always able to refer back to it. So it will show step by step as changes are made. It's helpful for the town. It's helpful for PD, and of course, in terms of FOIA. Implementation fee, the one-time fee is $1,000. Annual is $9,086.
Rachel, on the savings for the town, does that get added in 2026 when we have to do it, or is that the true, the $9,056? I think it is.
This remains our price.
It remains our price.
Yep.
And just for clarification, right now, we just rely on screenshots.
That's correct. Yep.
And if, say, our social team is not monitoring our Facebook page at 1:00 a.m. and then someone goes back and deletes it, too, we can't capture a record of that because they're asleep.
You're absolutely right. Interestingly enough, most cities don't have something like this, and it's really not important until you need it. So we're better to have it. Again, it's like an insurance policy.
I would like to add, even if we were screenshotting, it doesn't produce any of the metadata. And we need the metadata in there to prove that this was actually done at a specific time, and this would just give us more of that clarification. It would protect the town in case someone were to say that we deleted their post.
Any other questions?
Yes. Just trying to chase that because I'm trying to figure out, I mean, it's $9,000 a year recurring forever, which is probably going to go up by five or 10% a year. So what is our real liability here? Like, if somebody FOIA'd and want to know what happened on Facebook two years ago, if they want us to dig through our Facebook for, you know, a week, then we kind of charge for that. So I don't understand the liability other than a FOIA request, which by law, if somebody wants us to dig that hard, they kind of have to pay for that. What are the other, what are the other liabilities that would cause us to take on this recurring cost?
Probably the biggest example would be a comment made by someone that was then later deleted. It could have been a threatening comment. It could have been a disparaging comment that we would need to access later. And to what Gavin said, they may post it in the middle of the night and then delete it a short time later.
But what, but again, what's our liability if somebody makes a threatening, disparaging comment about us? Like, why do we care?
So there may be an opportunity for, depending on what type of comment is, for PD to be able to track who posted what and when. If there was a threat against staff or council, it would be something that we would be able to capture and reference. If there were ever to be a comment that we were to require be deleted, it would capture all of the steps that we took. We could certainly screenshot it currently, delete it, and make a comment as to why we've done that, but there's no record of the steps that we took and the proof that we did it in a certain order. It archives those records, and you can make notes alongside as to why you would have deleted those would be the reasons.
Understood. I would just, in my personal opinion, though, it sounds like we're, we're maybe going to spend $10,000 a year on the chance of maybe one comment in a 365-day period. So I think it at least deserves some scrutiny about, is that, is that a good spend? And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's at least worth asking.
That's fair.
Brad, isn't there some, and you may not know the answer to this, but if I'm correct, there is some pending ruling or something before the Supreme Court in regards to this, the U.S. Supreme Court in regards to this matter, because Facebook, social media is such a gray area with FOIA and posts being deleted. Particularly, I believe this ruling from the Supreme Court is related to public officials being able to delete, but I believe I've heard some or read that this is headed in the direction of public agencies as well.
I think you're right. I'm, I'm not up to speed on it completely, but I do know they're rumbling on it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Michael?
No, ma'am.
All right. Without further ado, we'll move on to ours. This is our last, our last and very exciting, which will benefit all of you here on council agenda and meeting management. This would be a fantastic paperless agenda management system that not only council would be able to use, but all of our boards and commissions. So it streamlines the agenda creation process. It utilizes one system for everyone to insert their information. It pre-populates and pre-builds agenda items for the future. It allows the municipal clerk to track items in real time during meetings and make notes. As you know, we currently provide not verbatim but very close to verbatim meeting minutes. And so this is one more task that would be automated for our municipal clerk. It automatically integrates into our current website and into the calendar. And there's a really nice visual from the end user, meaning the resident. When you were to log in, you could very clearly and easily see the various agenda items and very clearly see and access the attachments that are related to them. It automatically sends adopted ordinances to MUNICODE for codification. Many communities use paperless agenda management systems. Within our state, a number use this through Civic Plus. Again, Spartanburg was a huge supporter of this. I know Laura spent quite a bit of time visiting with municipal clerks over the past few weeks. Implementation fee is $28.80, and the annual expense is $20,845. So I want to show you what our Agenda Center currently looks like. It's not bad. But with the upgrade, it would better integrate into the calendar, and you would be able to pull up a little bit more clearer, fewer steps for Laura and for Michael and others who manage the website. Everything is just done from this one portal and then automatically populates throughout our website. So we reduce a number of steps, creates efficiencies for our staff. Laura, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I was just going to add that almost the municipalities like Spartanburg, they all said, of course, there's a learning curve as with anything, but they had good feedback, not only from, you know, the council themselves using it and the municipal clerks, but also the public, because they also, that would allow them to search more easily as well if they could go back to a previous public.
Did I hear you correctly say that this helps you take meeting minutes?
Yes, it does. I mean, it's not necessarily completely transcribing necessarily for you, but I think some of the neat features were, for example, our council members' names could be in there. And as you vote, I'm allowed to live checkbox the vote, you know, whoever's for or against. And if we decide we want to move something to the June agenda, I can send it there right now and it creates it for you. So also prevents, I think, any sort of items being missed or deletions, department heads would also be able to submit their information on the backend as well through that portal.
So that's a, that is a steep price tag on that one.
It is.
Is there any way we could get an estimation on what kind of materials and labor costs we would be saving with implementing a system like that? Is that even possible?
We may be able to estimate. Currently, everything our municipal clerk does is manual.
Right.
With Laura coming in new into this position after a long-tenured couple individuals, notes have been made with pencil and paper, files made. We currently utilize a Word document. This type of efficiency for agenda management is something that should be standard in order to operate efficiently, efficiency, efficiently, pardon me. Like I mentioned, our planning commission would be able to use this, our Board of Zoning Appeals, and our Board of Apairance. So those staff members would also benefit from the note-taking during the meeting. We may be able to calculate some of the paper and hours saved. I don't know that we, I don't know how we would estimate that ahead of time, but we could try.
So Laura, if you put the documents in the system, they would be public as soon as you put them in, and we wouldn't, council wouldn't get a packet ahead of...
You get the choice to decide that. The town would still have complete control every once something goes public. You guys could have a portal as council, just like how you're emailing packets now. It could be through this portal, or we could still email. I mean, that, that'd be the learning... I mean, that'd be the learning curve, but nothing would be public until authorized approval to make it public.
Is that portal just like a website link or is that an app?
It's a website link on our current.
Okay.
So in lieu of emailing you the packet as well as emailing media and other folks who've signed up, we would email them a notification and they would have access to the portal as well.
Then you would go in and do hard minutes like you do now and go back and post them to that, into our records?
I mean, once they got approval, they wouldn't be public until they got approval.
Right.
Any other slides? Okay. So I just wanted to reiterate, one-time fees would be sixteen thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and our first annual payment would be twenty-two thousand six hundred thirty-five per the folks with Civic Plus.
With who?
Civic Plus, that's our website provider.
So not agenda and meeting management, that was a different numbers, right?
Yeah, that's just one function.
Okay.
One more question. Are these like one-year contracts?
Yes. So what's presented tonight to consider basically is the menu of options. You can select one, you can select all, or you can tell us to go search and find other options.
Will y'all be bringing forward eventually the different communication options like the app and all that stuff? And how much it would cost too?
We will. We've looked into the app and were prepared to bring it tonight. What we heard from our peer communities and frankly from Civic Plus themselves was that their app longs for improvement, so we didn't bring that to you tonight. So we can continue considering what they offer or look at other programs that are available.
So, you know, I know we had an assistant municipal clerk that we do not have now. Is your, are you proposing that some of these costs are going to help us not have to refill that position? Or what are we?
So what I'm proposing is yes. Some of the duties that the former full-time assistant clerk performed would be absorbed by this technology. We still have that FTE in our budget and we do intend to keep it in the budget moving forward to next year. Although the assistant clerk duties would be folded into another existing position simply because we don't feel like there's a need for a full-time standalone assistant clerk.
Rachel, did y'all look into any of the media monitoring, earned media monitoring tools? Is that future or were there decisions made on that?
So we did look into that and I can have Jack speak to that just a little bit. I know we looked into Cision.
Cision.
Cision, thank you. I didn't think I was going to pronounce that properly. And again, I'll let Jack speak to that a little bit more. But I think what it came down to is because Lexington is a very common city municipal name, there was no way for us to drill down the results to only be related to the town of Lexington. He went through the demo and found it to be very helpful, but for the price to not be able to get the specific information, I don't know that it would have been worth investment. We also looked at Meltwater and we did not find that it could do anything more than what we currently do for some of the very similar situations, as well as because the type of information that we are looking for is a lot more narrow than what those companies would provide. Those sorts of programs would pull when people make comments, you know, anywhere on the web. And that's not necessarily what we were looking for. We were just looking for the news articles to be able to share in specific types of information.
Got it. I trust y'all's judgment.
Yeah, we tried, we definitely did.
So just for clarity, the request is to place this on the agenda? I'm certainly not, I'm not prepared to make a decision on these five things that I just got introduced to in the last fifteen minutes. So are we, what is the request?
So this was an introduction for you all and we've provided you the information to study. We intend to come within the next couple of weeks with a budget adjustment for, with an expenditure request for one or all of these items based on the feedback that we get from you.
So we could potentially put it on the agenda, but have some discussions over the next few weeks for clarity and things of that nature. And if we didn't get there, we could table it.
So that's all that I have related to the communications technology. I'm going to invite Jack. He's got a few policies that he wants to walk through with you all. These policies are presented to you tonight for the first time for consideration with subsequent adoption at a future council meeting.
So now, do you need all this put on the agenda together or separate?
The financial requests would all go together.
Okay, so do we need to do that now and then go into this?
Do you want to, you're referring to making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, we can certainly do that. We had intended to bring it on the 29th.
Okay, so you want to bring it on the 20th? Well, we wouldn't vote to put it on the agenda then.
At our budget work session, we were going to have a special called council meeting for a budget adjustment for items from this, to spend through this year's budget.
Okay, but I guess what I'm, are you wanting it on the 29th, the financial stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so we would need to vote tonight to put it on the 29th, correct? So do I hear a motion?
So I moved.
Councilmember Smith makes the motion. Do I hear a second? Now, understanding that we're still going to have a discussion about this and Rachel, and then we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Can you raise state of motion?
That we'll be adding the financial part that she just presented to a meeting for the 29th, a special council meeting before the budget work session, where she will bring some budget adjustments to you. But you will have time to talk about this.
I mean, does that require a motion or is this just simply a budget meeting?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Councilman Carr, second set, any discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I could just make clarification, we don't move to have a budget meeting every year. We have a budget that's in draft form that's not yet been presented, right?
Yes, the budget's not what we're going to be talking, it'll be the work session after the special council meeting.
I believe you're saying budget adjustments to the fiscal year 2024.
Correct.
Budget. That's what we would consider.
So you're telling me to implement this prior to the new fiscal year?
Correct.
All right, that makes sense. Sorry.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous.
The next item that Jack will present is all non-monetary, I will let you know that. But those items would be up for approval at a future council meeting for adoption.
All righty, thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I've, excuse me. We're going to start with, we have four little packets here. So we're going to start with the Marketing Communications Plan 2024. It's kind of got the teal stripe down the middle. All right, so this has been kind of a long time coming. This is a combination of things that came from our communications survey that our team put together, as well as just kind of understanding what has worked in the past with their social media and kind of referencing some other folks in the area as well, what's worked well with them. So I'm just going to kind of give a high level of this. There's a lot of detail here that's, you know, maybe a little bit more drilling down into, but I definitely encourage you to read through this and get familiar with it. But right off the top, the mission and vision for this communications plan is to position the town of Lexington as the premier destination in the Midlands of South Carolina for families, businesses, and a fulfilling life. This is showcasing its beautiful location on Lake Murray and a strong community support. Within that, I think anyone that's familiar with marketing and communications, you have to talk to the right people. So we also did some identification on that for our target audience moving forward. And we have four kind of personalities that we're going to be talking to on a regular basis that I think kind of fulfills our citizens here in the town. The first is families seeking a safe environment with quality of life activities. Number two is local entrepreneurs and business owners, which we have a lot of. Number three, potential visitors from nearby cities. That's going to include Columbia, Aiken, Augusta, and further out, as we all know. And also residents that are seeking information about what's happening in their community. That's kind of who we're going to be talking to on a regular basis and I'm sure all of you know, because you talk with them as well. That's the bulk of who we have. So, marketing channels here, social media being kind of first and foremost, the one that's most public, I feel like on a regular basis that allows for input. We also have email marketing here with town topics and showing different emails for events. Our website's going to have community information, relevant notices and everything. And then community events, we're going to leverage for self-promotion as well as having fun. So. Communication strategy, that's kind of reiterating a little bit of the same there, talking about how we're going to be actually communicating with them and the reason for that. So we're going to move on to our content strategy on the next page there. And this is a little bit of an outline of what to expect quarterly with a couple of themes and different ideas for posts and things like that. And that's going to be across social media or through email and everything with that as well. So our first quarter, the theme is going to be civic pride. So that's going to be getting involved here in the town and, you know, starting off your new year the right way. Quarter two is getting outside for spring, so that's enjoying our parks. Quarter three is summertime. And quarter four is going to be supporting local as we head into the holidays, whether that's shopping at local businesses or getting involved with, you know, something like Mission Lexington around the holidays there. So, moving on, we've kind of done this a little bit, but we wanted to put it on paper, standardizing our communication of meetings, talking about how we're going to be posting agendas and everything moving forward and how that kind of lays out throughout our social media pages. Talking about user-generated content as well. We're setting up an email address that people can submit their photos, whether they're out in the park or something, to have us reshare them or be able to use them in marketing materials in the future. And then a couple of long-form evergreen content ideas there of different fun things to do that we can just kind of post whenever throughout the year. Moving on, we have some strategic partnerships that we've been looking into. Continuing our partnership with the Lexington Chamber. We also have Experience Columbia and Lake Murray Country as well, helping with marketing efforts and promoting us as well as the Lexington County Museum when it comes to historical posts and Throwback Thursdays and things of that nature. Content direction. Reiterating a little bit more of the same here, focusing on our unique selling points of Lake Sud Living, talking about our state-of-the-art parks and everything, getting people excited in that sense. And then really, the bulk of this, we left it towards the end here, our performance metrics, kind of how we're going to be tracking how we're doing. I know that we've, you know, just happened upon a bunch of followers on Facebook in the past, but we kind of want to put a number to it and see if we can strategically use this plan to work towards a goal here. So put in a number to it, we're aiming for a 10% increase in followers, whether that's on Facebook as well as starting to use LinkedIn more as well for our business community and create a momentum through that here in the town. We want to do some business highlights and give back to our business community that means so much to us. So we want to have at least 24 new posts or existing local business posts within the year, as well as email updates. We have a very, very high, I think we discussed this previously, very high open rate with our town topics. So we want to continue that and really be able to communicate directly with our folks that way, so.
Jack, you put here that you're aiming for a 10% increase in followers on Facebook and LinkedIn. Do you know how many we had this year?
I do not know off the top of my head. I think Warren might know.
We have thirty-one thousand followers now. Four years ago, we had nine thousand followers. I can get the numbers to you though, because we track it.
That'd be cool, see.
And since he mentioned the town topics, I'm going to tell y'all too. Since we've changed the content of the town topics and what goes out, I have honestly been receiving personal notes in the mail telling me how much better they are and people calling me to tell me. I had someone call me today to just tell me it had more depth to it, that they really liked it.
Jack, can I ask a question?
Of course.
You put here, highlight 24 newer existing local businesses. And I want to preface with, y'all have done a great job putting this together. This one was of particular interest to me because I got a concerning, touching phone call from a local business owner a while back that said, "My business is struggling and I need help. Can y'all promote me on the town social?" And I know that that can be tricky because if we only select 24 in the town, will we have like, what, 4,000 or so? Could you just walk me through, like, what's that process going to be? Have y'all decided that? How do you select those people?
So we've had some conversation around it. There hasn't been a definitive way of doing that yet. I know that we have some businesses that open up throughout the year that have, generate a lot of excitement or whether it's a future business coming, you know, there's questions around, hey, there's this a list of building that's going up. What's going to happen there? So I think that that could be one side of it. I also think that businesses that kind of make an impact more on the civil side of things, like, hey, this business is really giving back and they've made an impact in our community, I think that'd be a great benefit of highlighting that as well. So I don't think it's necessarily going to be a, "I'm struggling, I need help" kind of situation, unless there was a very specific situation of where that would be fair to everyone. But this isn't necessarily an unfair advantage for somebody to have there, but it's going to be more of a, giving us an ability to actually host people on a regular basis without their, because as of right now, there's nothing really in place that makes sense for why we would post a business, so.
No, I think it's a great idea and I don't expect you to have 100% of the answer tonight. It's just, I actually spoke with Rachel, our administrator, about that because it's like, that's a really tricky situation and I didn't know how to approach it, so.
Right.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I would concur. That's a valid concern. Maybe we get around with some of that with celebrating businesses when they open. We could do anniversaries, people with five-year anniversary, 10-year anniversary. There could be some kind of metric. I mean, obviously there are going to be one-offs, but I think if we get really good at it, there's a lot of it, the question's certainly going to rise to the top. But we could figure that out, but we would need some kind of justifications.
Right, and there's been, I think, a great example of some good social media that we've seen as well as the city of Goose Creek. And I know that they have some promotion around local business as well. So I think leaning on a couple of other folks that are already implementing things like this would help us get through a little bit of the, how did you do this? What was your angle? Why did it make sense? So definitely a lot to work with there.
And you can always keep in mind, like we did last year, the shop local, eat local around Christmas time, like we went around and did as council members and staff too, and photographed with all of our businesses that we could get to, this time planned in advance. So, because that was short notice Gavin, but good idea.
I got one more question. The Experience Columbia and Lake Murray Country, what are they doing for us now? What are we working with them now?
So as of right now, I believe they are receiving some ATAX. I think Wes Crosby would be.
They are, they're receiving an ATAX.
So I know recently we met with Experience Columbia to talk about promotions for us, whether it's to events that are happening at the amphitheater or just general promotions as well through social media advertising. A piece of accommodations taxes that it needs to attract people outside the 50-mile radius. So I know Experience Columbia does a good job with that. They have a full-fledged, Experience Columbia is basically a marketing department, so they have a huge pool when it comes to that, so they're doing that. And then Lake Murray Country as well, partnering with them for, I know they are helping host the fishing tournaments that are out on the lake as well as others.
They also have that idea about our food alley of all kinds of, what do you, international foods in Lexington, because we kind of cover all of it around here.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know they want to do a big story on that. They think, that was their idea they brought forward.
Lake Murray Country pointed out that our main street here in Lexington is a very, I would say, international food kind of hall in a way, just because we have varying nationalities of food all the way down Main Street, which isn't necessarily common in a town our size, so. Yeah, so they have interesting ideas like that and different promotions for attracting folks here into the town.
Jack, I have one more question for you. Is there a similar document that y'all, are y'all working on? Have y'all thought about coming at, from, this is more of the marketing angle. Have y'all thought about more of the earned media side of things? Like sort of pre-planning, you know, good pitches that you could make to local media outlets? Have y'all thought that far? I know y'all have been working really hard on this. Have y'all gotten to that or, and I haven't been able to go through every page of this, so forgive me if it's included in there.
Not really. This is, we haven't really gotten to that. we, we haven't really gotten to that yet. Yeah, that's, that's a little more in-depth, you know, a little bit further out, strategic kind of marketing in that sense. I think this covers us on a general basis.
Yeah. No, this is, this is great. This is a great stuff. I, I just was curious if that had been thought about.
And this is really less than 90 days, truthfully, that y'all put all this together with everything else that's been thrown at you. So.
Great job.
Alrighty, any more questions? Maybe some later. Okay. Alright, so we're going to move on to brand guidelines. So, we are looking at, this is the Town's brand guidelines. We have the teal circle on the front, and you'll see why, and this is second why it's teal. So, excuse me, aqua. So, we're going to move on. So, we're moving here. This is brand standards. This kind of protects us with the use of our logo, our brand, and giving us a sense of belonging and branding within that. So, this is a pretty standardized document that organizations have, and we certainly had a need for it. So. Kicking it off here, we have our logo. Here's two examples. This is the light and dark version that would be typically used throughout things. And then also, a little asterisk here at the bottom. We didn't get too in-depth about spacing between other logos and everything, and we can certainly take a next step on that if we need to, or we see it fit, get use of our time if we need to. But, uh, simple usage here is that if we use our logo, the logo for the town needs to be larger than the other logos surrounding it. So. It's an easy one there. Color palette. This is giving a breakdown of our colors. We have the Town of Lexington blue with the very specific hex codes below that as well. So, that's going to make sure that people are using the exact color. We don't have different variations of blue like our state flag. And then we have our dark blue here, which is our primary color, which you'll see is used typically as a background color on different headings and things. And then we have our secondary colors. So, light blue, aqua, and two, two sets of gray that can be used. The general here is our logo color is for our logo, and then our primary color is going to be used in everything else. When using the primary color, you also can use a secondary color. A secondary color should not be used without your primary color. So, fairly simple there. Talk about fonts real quick, or the fancy word that I couldn't say earlier, typography. So, um, pretty simple here, and I, I will note that some of the marketing folks earlier were getting on to me about picking just one font, so there may be some other iterations when it comes to marketing materials in the future. We need to do a full font or type form when filling that out, but as of right now, we are looking at Inter as our main font, and this is relatively accessible across different platforms as well. So, if we've got folks that are using Microsoft on one side and, you know, Adobe is being used in our marketing side of things, then we can find that fairly easy. And this also will be used on our website. So, this is the new font for, our standardized font for our website coming out. So. And here's some good examples, headlines, subheaders, and body there. And then we also gave, oh, this is an interesting one here at the bottom. So, this is name distribution as well, standardizing that. So, here's our various names that are approved and ways to speak about the town. So, Town of Lexington, Town of Lexington SC, Town of Lexington, South Carolina, and then oftentimes, we're referenced as the town. So, with a special emphasis on capitalizing the T and town. So. And that is it for Town Brandon. We're going to move on. Excuse me. So, next one here is Ice House Amphitheater. Similar kind of rundown here, so I'll be speedy about these. So, we've got primary logos here with the Ice House, coming in two different colors, as well as a dark background. Similar usage here, that the Ice House Amphitheater logo should always be the largest in advertising setting. Secondary logo as well on the next page. This is going to include the Town of Lexington or presented by Town of Lexington under this, and this is used in various ads and print advertising and things, maybe where somebody isn't familiar with the town or with the amphitheater. So, that's going to be outside your 50-mile radius. This is typically used with Facebook advertising. Got color use here. This is our color palette. It's a little bit more expansive because it's going to have, it talks a little bit about the blending and shading of these colors, and these are also colors that are used throughout the Ice House website, throughout branding, and our, our usage distribution there. Talking about accent colors as well, similar to the Lexington document, Town of Lexington document. And then we're also looking at our font that's used there on the website for the Ice House. Alright, so we're done with the colorful stuff, and we're going into the policy stuff. So, a little bit less fun to look at. So, this is the Town of Lexington Policy and Procedure for Social Media Policy. Social Media Policy establishes guidelines for the establishment and use of the Town of Lexington social media sites as a means of conveying information to members of the public. And please note that this policy only applies to the town. This is not, does not apply to the Lexington Police Department. So, this is specifically for us. So. We've got definitions here of social media sites. That's going to include everything that we have currently, but it's not limited to Facebook, Twitter, or X, Instagram, YouTube, and LinkedIn. And then also gives a definition of post and posting and things like that that you'll see throughout this document. So. General policy here, one notable one here on the first page, no Town social media site shall ever be established for the Town Council, Commissions, Committees, or Boards. The establishment of Town social media sites is subject to the approval of the Communications Manager or their designee. So, this is just some different policies that, you know, maybe should have been in place over time that we've caught that just need to be put in writing here. So.
So, do we have a social media policy?
Varying things here. As we go through, we've got content guidelines and everything. You'll, can dive into these. They're, I wouldn't say necessarily redundant, but pretty obvious standards here. And then I do want to show you at, under Content Guidelines, 4.9. So, that's going to be on page three. This is kind of the interesting part, and this kind of goes back to the Archive Social questions that we had earlier. This is moderators may remove or redirect comments, excuse me, that contain any of the following, and we've got a list on page four here. So, these are different things that will break our social media policy that would allow us to remove comments or content, whether it's off-topic or inappropriate, whether it's breaking. For instance, Facebook has specific guidelines as well if it's breaking policies. So, this is kind of giving the outline of when and where we're allowed to make comment and take away comments and things like that. So. So, we've got there. And then also, content management, this talks about making sure that things are unbiased and that we're posting as a government body here. So. And then it establishes what our social media sites are, so that there's not any fraudulent copies or dupes out there as well. So. This policy, as it pertains to social media, is going to be linked on all of our social media sites as well. So, if we were to moderate a comment or something of that nature, they have the opportunity to have viewed what the policy was at that time. So. I'm happy to take any questions on this as well.
I have to say, I'm impressed after such a short period of time. It's a lot. Now, do we need to put this on the agenda for May? The policies?
Do we, does the, now, this, this says Town of Lexington. Does this cover the police department as well, or does the police department have their own policy?
Okay.
They have their own policy.
Thank you.
Quick, quick question, and you may or may not know the answer. It's like, when you edit comments on Facebook, it'll even show you previously edited comment if somebody's edited their comment. So, they, they track that information. Is that also true of deleted comments? Are deleted comments accessible to the page owner?
No, they are not, not at this time. So, Facebook does have the new feature that will tell you that this person has commented to a comment that has been deleted, but it won't let you know what that comment was. So, there's kind of a bait and switch that's happening as of recently, where somebody will comment something and trigger a response from someone and then delete their comment, so the other person looks bad. So, that's a common practice. And to go back to the Archive Social piece that you had a question about, that this kind of protects us with as well. I know that there are some cases where people are deleting comments and/or blocking people from different pages that are government bodies, and there are lawsuits against them against, for breaking the Second Amendment, or breaking their ability to, not the Second Amendment, First Amendment. I saw him look up, and I was like, that was the wrong one. So, yeah. Top of mind. So, freedom of speech is potentially broken whenever you're using a public forum like that, and deleting comments or moderating that. We're starting to figure out kind of how that holds up in court as well. So, policies like this can help protect us as well as being able to track how people are communicating with each other online on our pages as an open forum can help protect us with that as well through Archive Social.
Yeah, understood. I appreciate it. I mean, I'd be curious to know, and again, I don't want to belabor the point. It's just, you know, there, there's always a, a cost benefits in a scenario like this where you got to do some analysis. So, like, I'd just be curious to know if, if any of those lawsuits are happening in the state of South Carolina. Like, is there anything active in the last five years where somebody's been, some municipality's been sued and actually had to adjudicate something and pay an attorney for a deleted comment?
I believe DOT is currently litigation.
Yeah, understood. I, I'll be curious about municipalities, counties, things like that. People run after the deep pockets. Nothing we have to adjudicate here, but maybe if we run that down as we try to make that decision on just that spend, maybe we could ask that question.
So, do I hear a motion to put this, these policies and the branding on the agenda for May? This one goes on for May.
So moved.
Councilman Law makes the motion to hear second.
Second.
Councilman Smith, I saw him say it before I heard you. So, Councilman Smith, got it. Any discussion? Great job. All of y'all that worked so hard on this. I know some of y'all are quiet. Lauren, Kaylee, Michael, Walker, Lauren, Laura. Thank y'all. All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous.
Thank you. And I would like to point out, whether it's implementation of any of these policies when it comes to monitoring, or any of the technological add-ons, it wouldn't require additional staff for us to maintain. It would be maintained with the existing staff that we have. The next item that I'd like to present to you all, and you have it in front of you, are Youth Council Recommendations. So, among the other priorities that you all had for this year was establishment of a youth council. And the youth council can take a number of different forms. Many cities across our state, across the nation, of course, have youth councils. Some as close as Greenwood or Inman, Simpsonville, Mount Pleasant, Hardyville, Rock Hill, Charleston. Laura did a tremendous amount of research, looking at the different types of youth councils that are held across the state and what would work within the Town of Lexington. So, the documents you have here are just some very high-level recommendations, and I wanted to get feedback from you all before we moved forward. In discussion internally, we thought, in lieu of the youth council, we would recommend a Town of Lexington Youth Ambassador Program. We chose this specifically because we want to offer an opportunity for youth to learn not only about the town, but about civics, about the community, about volunteerism, and become ambassadors of their town, not only to other youth, but to people who are visitors, and build a training type of program so that maybe after they've gone off to college and come back, they'll join our planning commission, et cetera. And it creates a sense of an alumni association, and we could in fact have an alumni association once we have a few groups under our belt, and hopefully they can stay in touch and continue to volunteer with us. The purpose is to empower youth to be engaged and responsible citizens through a service learning opportunity hosted by the Town of Lexington, where participants learn about local government, develop leadership skills, and give back to their community through volunteerism. Our ideal number of participants would be around 12. It can vary. Some communities have seven. I saw some as many as 26, which seemed like quite a large group of people. And participant qualifications would be, at least for now, for our first year, town resident, juniors or seniors at Lexington High School and River Bluff High School. So, you would apply when you were a rising junior and a rising senior. We would have prospective candidates fill out an application, and then we would have an interview process as part of selection. To implement this, this year, we would circulate applications next month during the month of May. Before school was out, we would interview, select, and notify participants in June. They'd then have their summer July, and school starts early in August, although we would not have a meeting in August, let students get back in and get settled. We'd have our first meeting, which would also be an orientation, and the students would attend the work session of council in September, specifically on the 16th. They would then have meetings in October and November. These would likely consist of trainings, introductions to the town departments, and then in December, there would not be a meeting, but there would be a group volunteer event at the Snowball Festival. In January, we also would not have a meeting as students transitioned back into school. February, March, and April would be regular meetings. We'd also have a group project for the students to work on, which would be some mechanism of giving back to the town. So, we would envision the fall being to learn about our community-facing agencies and why it's important to volunteer and be in your community. The spring would then be a little bit more pencil-to-paper, if you will. We've already been in discussions with David from our Utilities Department, and we envisioned this year's project would be related to a community education campaign about our utility system, fresh water, and our sewage system. We think it'd be a good opportunity for students to learn about some of the basic functions of government. They could work with Michael to create some educational videos and to reach youth and all residents in a new way. On April 7th, at that meeting, council meeting, they would then graduate from the program. So, this would be our first year. We'll start small, or what seems small to me, and we can evaluate it from there.
So, Rachel, what if we just did seniors this year to try it?
We could certainly do that.
Just to see. And the reason this is coming forward is because the principals have spoken with me, and they would need us to get the applications into them so that they could do this before school gets out at the end of May, end of May when they get out.
It is.
So, we would move pretty quickly.
I would like to see at least a couple of juniors on this, those that could, they're not, they're going to come back and continue to serve. You couldn't have a junior come on that would come back in the following year to bring the next class through? Possibly.
We could certainly look at that.
I think it was just to give them a chance to move forward. I mean, and, I mean, because they've got to go through the, they got to pick a different project to do each time.
Right.
And so, it wouldn't matter if somebody was on, on there or not. They still got to go through the process. And I got to thinking about it as we were sitting here, because you had mentioned to me at first about just, and I was the one that said, "What about juniors too?" But as I was sitting here listening to you, if they're juniors and seniors and they tried to come back and serve again for the second year, they're going to be going through some of the same stuff.
They would. Mm-hmm.
That's the reason I said, "Maybe it's just seniors."
What do you give those juniors? If you only pick two juniors, I don't know how many you're talking about bringing on board, but if you bring on two juniors or one junior between the three, there's three high schools in this.
Two.
You're only going to, you're not going to include one at all?
They don't have part of the town.
Okay.
They have to be town citizens.
So, if you did, okay, so if you just do those two, you bring on one junior, or maybe one junior from each school, then they are the leadership. They get the opportunity to lead the following year.
I sort of see this like Leadership Lexington in a way. I mean, it sounds similar. I haven't gone through that program, but you can only go through that program one time, I believe. So.
That's the reason I was thinking it should be seniors, because you, but you take away somebody else's ability if they come back the second year.
I was seeing, is it a long-term process where every year, there's two juniors put on, and the following year, those juniors will take the program over and lead that county?
No, it's kind of like Leadership Lexington County. No, it's kind of like Leadership Lexington County, which is you don't go through but one time.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So it's the two high schools that we have in the town.
Right.
Would homeschoolers that live in town limits have an opportunity to participate?
In other communities, they do. This is the jumping point, jumping off point for negotiations. This would be the baseline. In terms of just starting somewhere to get the program off the ground, we selected just the two high schools. But I understand where you're coming from. I think once we got to the point where we're a little bit more versed in it, we'd open it up. Because there may also be town students that go to Gray Collegiate or elsewhere.
I think you're right. I think you're right, Will. It was just, this was the initial kickoff, the first year maybe. And then, you know, have a little bit more dialogue throughout the year and know who we got in contact with for homeschool and how we do that type thing.
Awesome. Great.
The goal would be to expand.
This was basically working into the school systems right now.
So ALA?
Once they have their upper school, that they could absolutely be.
But this is just for this term, because these two schools are willing to work with us, and then it could add as we go forward. And we may have to add more if we add ALA and then we add.
This could take off. Like, this could be a lot of fun.
Yeah, it could.
So this was just a starting process of it, to do it kind of like Leadership Lexington County. I think I would like to go with just seniors and start out that way. And then if you want to change it, you can come back and change it.
I don't entirely have a preference of if it's juniors or seniors. I see both sides having the, you know, different age, different ages there. But I can certainly see why maybe for the first year, it's easier to have just seniors. I think this will be something great for the community, though. I mean, we heard at municipal association last year, just how wonderful these students are. And it's sort of designed to keep those students engaged. Once they go to college, they want to come back home and serve their community. So I think it's, I think you did a great job putting this together.
Thank you.
And I like the ambassador part of it instead of just youth council.
Mayor.
Yes.
I think that, I agree, I think it's going to work best if it's just seniors. I think it's a one and done. It's just one man's opinion. I don't, you know, I'm just sharing my opinions. But I do think that we do internships at Radius, and we do residencies. And if we have somebody leading this that's responsible for it, that's great. It's great. And if we don't, we don't. So who is, who's ultimately responsible for running this program?
Our municipal clerk.
No pressure.
We would start with the municipal clerk providing all primary coordination. Each of.
And our assistant marketing manager, the River Bluff, when I was speaking to them, highly recommended that she take part in this too, because she was very active in her student council, president of student council?
She was.
And she was very active there. So they recommended that she be involved in this from the River Bluff staff.
Yeah, full confidence. I mean, it's not written on here anywhere, like, who's got the ball?
No, and that's an excellent point. I would envision each meeting having a different staff leader. That way, the youth were able to be exposed to different types of people. So each department might lead a meeting, but having Laura be the person that took care of them the way that she takes care of all of you.
Yeah, I think Laura do a phenomenal job, but you do have to, because I've done it really well and really poorly personally. So I understand that. That'd be great.
Is that a hair motion?
No. But just sitting here thinking about it, like, I don't, I think Will's suggestion's good. And I wouldn't, I don't know why we wouldn't start off with 12 or 15. I don't know why we wouldn't include the upper schools that are within town limits, namely ALA, Northside.
I'm worried about Northside.
I think those are the two that come to mind. But if we're going to do this by application only, exclusivity is always great. I think that's a good thing. Makes it kind of competitive. So I think we have four that are actually inside the town limits. Am I missing another high school?
Is ALO, I mean, ALA got their higher partnership?
Yeah, they're K through 12. They're full, they're full on. And certainly, you know, if we're going to advertise it, we, they're certainly a homeschool co-op. I think we should open up the applications far and wide to every senior that that lives in the town through homeschool and or attends one of those four high schools that are within town limits. Because I think that would only breed a different level of community in there as people kind of cross pollinate across high schools. And we got some private school, some charter school, some traditional public. That would be my vote.
So you want to move it from 12 to 16 too, so we can expand it some?
Yeah, yeah. I think if it covers all four high schools and homeschool co-op, I think that'd be great. I mean, there is a number where you have diminishing returns. So.
16 feels good to me.
I'm not the ultimate judge of the number.
That's why I said 16.
I love, I will just say, I love the idea of 16 students. You probably don't know this about me, but when I was a student at Carolina, I founded the Moore School Business Student Ambassadors Program. And I stood up our inaugural year through the second year. And it was a lot to coordinate 12 student ambassadors. And it became so much that they actually had to hire a full-time position. Obviously, these students were a little more engaged in what this program would be. But I do somewhat think we should limit it to maybe 10 at max. I mean, that just seems like a lot for the first year when we don't really know how this is going to go.
But you're going to have some of them that can't make it because of sports and other things like that. I mean, anytime you have a committee, or have people coming, there's.
I personally think if you sign up for this, this should be something that like, you know, you got to be at it.
Okay, I agree with that. But if you've got sports and stuff, you do have to take those kind of things into consideration as far as dates of working with those kids.
Leadership Lexington gives you only so many absences, and then you're out.
Most programs do you like to.
This is for, we do students in action at Mission Lexington. And they are, they come for 45 minutes every Tuesday, and they are there, they don't miss. They're not allowed to miss.
Yeah. I mean, we had students at Carolina that full course load, intramural sports, whatever, and they were still.
But I guess what I'm saying.
When you signed up for it, you knew what the schedule was going to be.
I guess what I'm saying is that we would have to make sure, because the sports are not going to let them miss. Especially, I know, at the big schools, they're not going to let you take off to go to this if it's on a game night.
Hundred percent.
So you got to, we got to at least look at the calendar with them when they come in and say, hey, you know, what are the game nights and where do they fall? So the kids can be able to be here.
But, I mean, less is more. So I don't know, I don't know the substance of these meetings and how they're going to be run, expectations, things like that.
You tell us 12 or 16.
I mean, I'd be happy, I'd be happy for you guys to make that call.
My recommendation would be 12 to begin with, because it is a more manageable number. Understand too, that getting off the ground, incorporating four high schools plus homeschool and coordinating schedules would be darn near impossible, which is why the recommendation was to start smaller. Well, we will, of course, do what you all would like us to do. But I would, I think 12 would be good.
I'm good with 12.
To start with. Thank you. So would you like us to advertise it to Northside, ALA, River Bluff, Lexington, and the homeschool seniors?
So you were saying the first year you'd like to try just the two schools, just to get a grip on what you're doing?
Yes.
That's confusing to me. 12 students is 12 students. Like, what's the issue with the schools?
But I think, I think she means all their different schedules. She's trying to figure out how that would just play into it, how that would work with the school schedules.
Do we have relationships at all the schools? I mean, I mean, I imagine our PD does.
We do.
A good job for resource officers to figure out.
You said, Ron, stay in your lane.
Mayor, I make a motion that we move this forward with 12 students to be inclusive of Lexington, River Bluff, ALA, Northside Academy, and the homeschool co-op.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. And it is going forward.
The next item we have is related to the Small Business Committee, Small Business Advisory Committee, pardon me. Staff just has a few clarifying questions for you all. I've provided for you all a copy of the ordinance where council adopted the Small Business Advisory Committee. I'm trying to find my notes. We know at our last regular meeting, you all appointed the members of the committee. And we do intend to send welcome notices to them, but we wanted to get some additional clarification from you all before we did so. Staff intends to send a letter and essentially a doodle calendar to collect meeting availability for the first meeting for the full group. When we do that, we'll need to be able to let them know who the appointed staff liaison is. The ordinance does say that council appoints the staff liaison. My recommendation at this point is for our municipal clerk to perform the liaison duties. I'm sorry, I can't find my, I typed up some notes, but that's okay. The staff liaison will be responsible for scheduling the meetings. According to the ordinance, the committee will set its own bylaws. And there will be a council person who will serve as a liaison to the committee. Furthermore, need advice on who the town council intends to appoint as the liaison so that the staff person can work alongside them.
Well, when this was done, Gavin was originally appointed as the liaison. But I do think we need some clarification of what the liaison does, because they, never before in the town of Lexington have they directed the committee. They've basically been just sitting in the audience while the committee's working. And if the committee asked them a question, they answered it. Or they might give a report back from what's been going on with council. But they give, am I right, Brad? But they give no interaction with the council, with the committee. That's the way it's been on all of our committees.
Yeah.
And I, I understand that the ordinance says that the liaison will meet with and advise the committee on a regular basis as a liaison to the council. However, they'll be advisory-only, non-voting, and not constitute actual membership.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I had a couple of questions. Like, why does this committee need bylaws? We have, how many committees we have? We have about seven standing committees. They have, they're all led by chairman. Some have actual judicial authority in decision-making. Some are simply advisory. Do any of those have bylaws? Well, certainly like the BZA, things like that, that, that are judicial in nature would have bylaws. But, but our other committees, I just think, I don't know how that got in there. But this, this committee sunsets at the end of '25. It's kind of focused for a short period of time to help with communication between the town and the business community and generate ideas. So I think there's probably some amendments to be made to this. And unless somebody can come up with a good reason why we would burden them with coming up with their own bylaws and rules of conduct at meetings, maybe we should look at doing some edits to this ordinance, because I don't think that's the purpose at all.
Does the traffic committee have bylaws?
No.
No.
No, that's, I think that's just boilerplate language that wound up in there that should not have wound up in there.
I have no objection to that. It seems excessive to me.
Yeah.
I do think that there should be some standard procedure of how they function. I don't know if you call that a bylaw, you know, but just, I guess, similar to what our other committees have, what, you know, dictates when they meet, that sort of thing. But I don't know if you need a full set of, you know, bylaws, so to say.
I think the other thing that we just need to address is the liaison issue. And we, we went through liaisons about three months ago and talked about having liaisons to all of our committees, which we had done away with that several years ago, primarily because it got somewhat territorial and wasn't really that beneficial, I think, to the town or to the council as a whole. Because you just kind of had, you just kind of had standing people and standing committees. And so given the fact that, that we did away with liaisons to committees, I think it's worth asking the question, and this is not, it's not meant to be divisive, but it's certainly the valid question of why we would put a liaison on one committee and not on the other six or seven. I mean, if we want to revisit that as a council and say, yeah, like committees work best when they have a council liaison, then maybe that's a conversation we should have, something we should pursue. But it, in my mind, it either is or it isn't. Like, it's not, one works with liaison, the other six don't. So I think it's, we need to look at that holistically and ask that question. I think that from my experience being here 10 years, I think the, I think the argument for not having a specific council liaison for any given committee is the fact that you do have a staff liaison for every committee. And therefore, when, when things are communicated from the council to the committee, or vice versa, from the committee to the council, it comes through that staff member. And therefore, that staff member is, has more of a timeframe and responsibility to communicate to all of council, as opposed to information just going to one council member, who's not really working a full-time job here and set up to do that communication on a regular basis to all of council. And I think that was probably the driving force of having staff be those liaisons so that they, and for example, Planning Commission is one of those that, that had a liaison forever. And then most recently, John and, John's done a great job of going to those meetings and giving us quick updates of everything. Same thing with BZA. So we need, at least need to ask the question, are we going to do liaisons or not? Are we just going to cherry pick a few and do liaisons? And if we are, we certainly need some kind of justification for doing one and not doing the other. And I think that's the question that, that people are asking.
I'll give you, if I may chime in real fast, I'll give you just a simple, great justification. It's that, we all know, I was elected less than a year ago. And when I talk to business owners, they feel like it's hard to talk to members of council, that it's hard, that the council doesn't hear them, that it's hard to do business here. Not every business owner says that. So I think that's a great justification, is that we're going to seat a member of council on there, not as the chairman, not as the director of the committee, but just to hear them. And then to liaise between the council. And I think that's why it was designed that way, to show them that we are listening, we do care. And we're showing that by a member of council showing up to all of your meetings, by which I've volunteered to do. And we all know that those conversations were had. These conversations were had starting last June. We voted for, or we, we started the debate back in August and passed this on October 2nd. We voted on the meeting minutes, where this was very clearly laid out. So I would also ask, why now?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I've had a chance to review some of these minutes, and I would just want to point out that in October, I do see this ordinance that we passed, and I do see very explicitly, it's undeniable that it says in the first paragraph, that the committee will consist of three citizen in-town business owners and six additional in-town business owners, a staff, and council liaison, all of which shall be appointed by town council. Goes on to later say that the council liaison has a underlying section, says they'll function under the guidance and direction of the town council. Member of the town council shall meet with and advise the committee on a regular basis. So this is the ordinance that we read in and signed on the 2nd of October, 2023. Unfortunately, our behavior since then has been woefully inconsistent with that ordinance, because as I look at the minutes, on January the 16th, we had a work session, and the minutes that were revolved in that showed up on the January 29th agenda on page 14 of 54, and is devoid of any appointment of any council liaison for the Small Business Advisory, or any committee for that matter. It goes on to point out the reason for taking those from those committees for the same reasons that Councilmember Carron's previously laid out. It then goes on to address the cog and joint water sewer. Interestingly, the vote was split at 5, 4, and 2 against. I'm interested to see what the two dissenting votes were for that.
Oh, it was me, if you might, just for the record.
No, I'd like the record. Thank you. That's what we're working on.
Yeah, it was when you all decided, you know, Yeah, it was when you all decided, you know, behind the scenes, the cog, the, we want to open that debate up again.
So at that time, you were wanting to be on the cog. So then, on March the 4th, there were an agenda items published recounting the minutes from January 29th of 2024. And in that council meeting, number seven, it's page eight of 28, or page five is numerically found on that agenda, says appointment to boards and committees, applications for appointment to the town of Lexington boards and committees were submitted as follows. Board of Appearance Committee, Amelia Pakta. Historic Preservation Review Committee, Lori Horton-Carry. Planning Commission, Betsy McCall. Board of Zoning Appeals, Dawn Weatherly. Traffic Committee, Brian Maddox. Editorial note, Mayor Pro Tem Williams made a motion to appoint these individuals to their respective committees. Councilmember Smith seconded. The motion was unanimously carried. There's no mention whatsoever of anybody being appointed as a council liaison to a committee. Number eight following that was appointments to the liaison appointments for the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, Central Midlands Council of Government. And it states, bear with me, I'm almost done. Following a town election, the council reviews board member, council board member appointments for two-year terms listed below are the proposed council member appointments to the two boards. Joint Water Sewer Commission Board, Hazel Livingston. Alternative, Ron Williams. For Central Midlands Council of Government Board, Todd Karnes. Councilmember Lyle, as an editorial added, this council in 2019 chose to vote and remove the liaisons from the other committees or commissions for the hierarchy of liaisons to be answering to all of the council equally. And more importantly, that all council members are encouraged to be involved in all committees and boards. Councilmember Lyle made a motion to approve these appointments. Councilmember Michael seconded. Seconded, the motion was unanimously carried. I have been unable to locate any other minutes or any other votes taken by this council that mentions anything about committees, much less a small business advisory committee. So it appears we have a inconsistent behavior with regards to what our ordinance says.
So I have a question. When I was running, I can say that the planning commission liked having a council member there. Because I heard from every one of them during that time, back in November when I was running for election. They all contacted me, they liked having a representative from council there. Now, should we be the one that writes up what happened and send it to council? No, I think that should be staff. I always think staff should do, just like y'all did all this stuff tonight. That's what y'all do. And y'all know more about it than all we, we all do. But I have heard that some of the committees do like to have a face out there. Now, how the liaison works, what we look like as far as there, or whether we're just each juggle to take turns going to different committee meetings. I know some people have more interest in some things than others. I mean, I'm probably one of the only ones that really likes the historic committee, but I don't, I don't really have that much time for some things. But I know that the planning commission would like for all of us to show up sometime. So how could this work? How could this work to where we're a member that's not directing the committee? I mean, you definitely wouldn't direct the planning commission, but you would be sitting there for a face and support to the committees. How could that work?
And I appreciate that sentiment, but I think, for me, what this boils down to, and whether or not we'll admit it on the record or not, this boils down to your word. Because we all, individually and collectively, had conversations regarding this small business advisory committee, where all of us, including the former mayor and a former council member, and perhaps Ms. Michaels, that's not with us this evening, have discussed knowingly that I was going to be the council liaison. I would correct, or I don't want to say correct, but just note that, Mayor, I haven't been formally appointed to the committee, but it does show that, you know, it was, it was very clearly understood that I was going to be the liaison to this committee on behalf of council. I think that there certainly should be some discussions to shore up what those responsibilities are. I don't think that I should be setting the agenda or leading their conversation. I think it should simply be a liaison to the council, or excuse me, to the committee from council, to have dialogue between the two bodies and to bring messages back to y'all. That's what that should be.
Madam Mayor? If I may, just in quick response, I, I don't know that this needs to be a hill that we die on, but I do think that there was an ordinance passed under the old council, and then there was two, if not three, different meetings, minutes that were read, that were voted on, ratified. With the only discrepancy or variance being your dissent, Councilmember Smith, with respect to the vote where you wanted to be on the cog. So I would respectfully disagree that, I think it was forgotten what was in that ordinance, and that the behavior of this council has been more in line with all the other text of these notes that says we were trying to get away from this hierarchy in a way of playing favorites. And so I, I'll rest with that. I don't have any other argument to make, other than we can continue to talk about this until the morning comes. But at this point, this council has not taken action to appoint anyone. So we can talk about all we want, but there's, there's no vote being taken here. This is a work session, and there's no council member who's the liaison. And that can't change tonight, so.
You're right, that it can't change tonight. But again, I'd also just like to note again that Todd and my fellow council members, this comes down to your word. We all have these conversations. If you'd like to go back on it, you're welcome to do that, you can do that. You can rest your head at night knowing that you did that. But for me, when I look at our meeting minutes and our agendas, I also don't see any language where we've repealed the language from this.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. That's why I said at the beginning.
So I do believe at this moment, there is set to still be a liaison to the committee. It would be incumbent upon this council to pass updated language, I guess, for the ordinance to repeal some of that language, by which I'll be happy to be on the record that I will not be voting for. Because I think business owners in this town would love to see a liaison from council, be formally appointed to the council that's hearing their voice.
I think business leaders in the town would like to see all of the council get behind their businesses and support them.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with that.
I think I need some definition of what the liaison role looks like. Did you do that, Brad? Could you come up with some definition of what that looks like?
Sure.
Even if we decided to put it back with, coming back to planning commission? Because I think the planning commission would like to see us all some.
And, and if I may, Madam Mayor, I mean, this is, this is getting really personal. For me, it's not personal, this is philosophical. Are we going to have liaisons, or are we not going to have liaisons? And it either makes sense or it doesn't. And we need to be uniform in what we do. And we need to figure out, if we make a decision on one way or the other, we need to know why we made a decision for one way or the other. I have seen, I've certainly seen the, the negative impacts of having liaisons, where things get siloed off, and there's not a great communication with council. There may be communication with a council member. And so I, I don't mind having the philosophical discussion, because it's not personal, Gavin. It's just a philosophical deal. We need to decide which way we're going to go. But it doesn't sound like we're going to do anything tonight. We probably need to talk about this amongst ourselves and figure out a plan going forward. But that, that's my point of view.
So Rachel, could you go ahead and move forward? We're sending out letters and getting ready to try and work that calendar. I mean, it'll probably take a little while with all the different things going on and everything. And just go ahead and proceed and let us come back and...
I think we should also revisit, especially in the spirit of revisiting things. We ought to look at that sunset clause, because it's taken us nearly a year to get a committee stood up. So now we, the committee is now only going to have about a year to do work, because it's taken us nearly a year to simply stand a committee up. So I implore the council to at least extend the period of the committee a little bit longer, so that it have time to do some work. And then I'd also just like to ask one last question, and then I'll stop speaking here. It, it is a little personal for me. I'll admit that, because I care about the small businesses. But I'd just like to ask, apparently this became an issue before the meeting. And it's widely known that I was going to be the liaison to the committee. Why'd no one have a conversation with me? I will point out that I did have a conversation with the mayor. Probably Councilmember Allen had no clue, if I had my guess, and I'm just curious why the rest of, no one, I mean, y'all had your offline conversations.
I think the...
So where was the conversation with me?
I think the clarification is, is there liaisons? Is there not? What does liaisons look like?
And I agree 100%. I'm just curious, why did, why was there no dialogue with the person that it was affecting?
That is with me, that's me.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
So can I answer?
Sure.
So I didn't know this was coming up until we got the minutes. And then I hadn't discussed it with anybody prior. I was the person most affected by this, because I served for several years on two committees, and when it came time for me to be appointed as a liaison, is when everybody voted to end the liaisons. So I had served all that time, and there was, it was all changed. So, you know, it's, to me, it's, I, I, it's a, it's like Todd says, philosophical. Either we're going to do it, or we aren't going to do it. It's not going to be one committee. I don't think it's right to do one committee and favorite, show favoritism towards one committee. I think it needs to be either all of them or none of them. And we need to decide as a group.
But my, and I respect that, Councilmember Williams. My question would still be, we got our minutes on Friday, so that's 72 hours.
I didn't have any prior conversation with anybody about this.
Not, not before we sat at this dais.
Until when I was walking in, I think I was sitting up there.
No text messages at the dais, no side conversations.
I don't have any.
Gavin, this, this isn't personal. This was, this was not personal.
Okay, so how about this? It's not personal, let's do this. We need clarification, Brad, on what a liaison looks like. Because if you, if we decide to go back with liaisons, everybody clearly needs to understand what that looks like, and what your role is. And that staff's role is still to give an update to council, not the council member giving it. And then, what else did I say while I go? Is that what I, all I said?
Yeah. I, I think there was also, everybody was looking for some clarity. There's been mention of, we're about to ring these people's bell when we elected them, and we, we certainly need to give them some clarity. And I don't know that, that we as a council have had any space to try to bullet point out any clarity of what, what we guys want you to run at. Aim at nothing, you hit it every time. So we need to give them a little, maybe a little more focus. And I don't know what that is, or maybe, maybe we can do that offline amongst ourselves. We can talk and maybe do some submissions, something like that.
Maybe staff, maybe John, maybe staff can throw us some things too.
Yeah, based on comments, feedback, I don't know.
So we'd envisioned a mid-May meeting, by the time we reach out to everyone and we coordinate schedules, so the first meeting would be in mid-May. The way the ordinance currently reads, they adopt their bylaws. So if, if we're going to update this, we could remove that, if that's the desire. The meetings are open to the public, just as a reminder, so anyone can attend, regardless of whether they're in a liaison. It does say that members elect the chair at the first meeting. So as, so long as council is good with that, we can certainly continue with that, even if the meeting occurs before this can be updated.
I was going to ask you, could the meeting occur even if we have not got everything updated?
We can. It would be essentially a meet and greet, an introduction. We can take care of some housekeeping things. We could use it as an opportunity to hear from folks, why they want to be on the committee, some of the things that they want to learn and know. And it would give us an opportunity.
That might be a good thing.
And then it does require council to appoint the staff liaison. We can operate with someone in the interim until staff appoints it, if you want to keep it as a staff-appointed, staff liaison, council-appointed staff liaison, sorry.
Most of the time, so my being at town hall, and Ron just clarified that, is there's been a staff liaison and a council liaison on these committees. Council liaison is nothing but there.
Right.
I mean, you really don't bring stuff back to council. The staff sends that, it's really, your face is just there.
The staff liaison in this instance will coordinate the meetings.
And, and do a write-up to send to council, is what would normally happen.
Precisely, right. So per this ordinance, council appoints that individual. So my recommendation was the municipal clerk.
Just pile all the things.
And can you, can you move forward with that?
I can, and we can, as we update this ordinance, we can clarify that and make any appointments or edits necessary.
Okay. Okay. So we've got, you all get some clarification, we're going to figure out what that would look like, and...
Can I suggest we have an alternate or two for the staff liaison, just in case?
And kind of what their role would be too, Rachel?
Okay.
It might be good for all of them, so we just know. I mean, John sends us written updates, I think Randy does. I mean, he has nothing on his plate right now, so I don't know why he's not sending us messages every day. Joking, Randy, joking, you know that.
Laura did a good job with the traffic. An excellent job with traffic.
So I think that we can...
Laura's going to have to delegate some work to her student ambassadors. You may, you may want 16, if we get some work out.
I think we've got to decide to, you know, how, you know. Ron, I know you enjoyed serving as a liaison. I mean, you did enjoy it, so I think that's something that's got to be discussed.
That's all I have for this item.
Okay, and then the dedication plaque policy?
I've provided to you all very, very simple outline of what a policy could look like. As the town is erecting buildings or reconstructing parks, it's common and an accepted practice to post a dedication plaque. We currently don't have a policy of what we put and why. So what you have here is something that we put together fairly quickly, based on review of a few other communities. And essentially, the names of the mayor and council members seated on the date of the formal groundbreaking of the facility, and the names of the mayor and council members in office at the time of dedication, along with those of the administrator, assistant administrator, finance director, department director, if there is one related to the project, construction manager, architect, general contractor, again, if there are those individuals related to the project, shall be engraved on a permanent plaque affixed to the facility. Key to this particular policy is that it recognizes council members who may have come off the board during construction time. There are times when you will only see the current council members, and if that's what council would like to do, we can certainly do that. This is just a way to honor council members who previously had served. And you'll see in the procedures, the list of what all would be included at standard, town logo, identification of facility, et cetera. At the time of dedication, if there were staff, pardon me, council members no longer in office, they would simply be referenced as mayor or council member in office during construction.
And so all those staff members that you named, do we have that over at the Ice House? Oh, you do?
Out front here, we just have the administrator. I did look at that on the way in. Every community does it differently, and without a policy, over the decades, I'm sure it was done differently.
I think you're getting into a lot of people to go on there when, I mean, this is kind of simple, the way this one's done.
Okay.
So have we not had a policy about this before?
No.
Okay, so we're just kind of rolling with it?
That's just got current council on it, right?
That's got the current council on it, and then it's got the administrator and the assistant administrator on it. I mean, I, I think adding the, a lot of these others, I don't know how I feel about that.
Okay.
I like the simpleness. I do like, I do agree that former should be on it if somebody was on it when the ground was broken. And I, I mean, I thought that one, we're not going backwards, this is from point four.
Right, this would be from this point moving on.
I don't, I mean, I didn't ever like the fact that somebody's name that worked so hard on it, and that was their project, didn't get on the Ice House, I think it did. So being me, you know, there's a lot of people that were involved in getting to where we are with something that's going to open hopefully soon, two things that's going to open hopefully soon. And I would like to see them on there, whether it's former, or however you word it, but something.
I agree. I think this is a good precedent to set. I do think that it should be maybe a little more simple format like this, one that's over at the Ice House. I just, I'll be honest, I hadn't really seen a lot of them, so I drove by and looked at that one. And, you know, this one lists the town council, the town administrator, assistant administrator, architect, and the contractor.
Those that I've seen that include these other individuals, finance director's been included, frankly, to pay homage to managing a multimillion-dollar project, similar to a department director. For example, if we were building a public safety headquarters, you would want the director at the time of dedication to be listed. Again, same with the construction architect, general contractor, just paying homage. the construction architect, general contractor, just paying homage, don't have to include it. Last that's on here, sometimes there are funding requirements where you have to acknowledge a certain type of fund, or the Land and Water Conservation Fund is one. For example, you have to acknowledge they provided funding. So just wanted to give you all options. We can remove any of those that you think are too much.
So is this a, is this a policy decision? Is this a, an ordinance that we're going to pass?
It's a policy.
It's a policy.
So how's that decision going to be made?
Council will adopt the policy at its next meeting.
But I mean, we're, we're in work session, so like, how's that, how's that decision made? Is it made up? Do you just get a feedback, a consensus of council, and then that's a policy decision be made by you as administrator, or is this something that we have to vote on and adopt? Like, what's the mechanism for this?
So what I'm taking now is feedback from you all, and I'll strike or make edits that you'd like. I'll update it. I'll bring it to you all for adoption at the next council meeting.
Is it like a single reading scenario?
Yes. Reason being, you'll notice referenced in the end, once councils come to a conclusion on what should be included, it will allow staff in the future to procure these and move forward without having to come to council for permission, unless there would be a departure from what's listed here.
Understood. I, I would, it's not a hill I'm going to die on. So, but it sounds like this may be the only time I get to speak to it. So, as my wife says, I'm, I'm often wrong, but never in doubt. All right? And I'll own that. That's, that's certainly true. But, but I have to use my voice. I think, I think this Pandora's box, my name's over on the Ice House Amphitheater. It, it should not be. There should be a lot of people who came before me to have their name on there instead of me. I just happened to get elected right as that thing came. And so that's just been part and parcel of it, I think, to try to do this going forward and not go backwards, because we've got maybe two of the most signature things in our city with the pavilion and the, and the Ice House Amphitheater, and to say, we're not going to go backwards and recognize all those people, and who are those people, and how many are those people. I think, I mean, people, let's just face it, people make fun of politicians for putting their names on stuff, right? And I just, I just think that's a crazy, I think less is more. I don't care about having my name on stuff. I, I would not feel comfortable at all saying, okay, we're going to do this going forward, put everybody, put 35 people over there on Old Mill Pond, because that thing started in about 20, 2008. We have three mayors on there.
This is when construction.
Right. But that, I mean, you guys funded that thing back in '08, so you can have three mayors on the Old Mill Pond.
Because it didn't groundbreaking, right, did it?
No, it would be at the time of groundbreaking.
It'd be at the time of groundbreaking.
Okay, so let's just, let's just face it, people make fun of us for this stuff. So like, we just need to be careful with this. I would prefer, I just think it makes sense to put the sitting council at, at any time anything's dedicated. I think all the people that contributed, I think we should certainly bring them back. We should honor them for their contributions. They should be at the groundbreaking. We should, we should show that respect. But I think, I think if you're going to do this, I think you got to go backwards, and I think you go backwards, it just gets really cumbersome. And I just don't think, I, I wouldn't want to get into all of these staff positions. I mean, at the end of the day, you know who pays for all this stuff? Should put a big plaque up there and go, thank you to the citizens of Lexington for paying your taxes and being great people and taking care of our stuff. Put a big old plaque like that. So I just, I'm just, this is not personal. Again, it's philosophical. I just think this is heading in the wrong direction. We got a system that works. We should put it there, but we should honor the people who, who sacrificed for it beforehand. Just my thoughts, not a hill I want to die on.
There is a lot of municipalities that do have this kind of policy, though.
Madam Mayor, I would join Councilmember Carnes. I think it is very egotistical and vain for us to even have this long of a conversation about it. I don't think it's the purpose of doing all this, and I think that it's, it's a bad optic. And I think we've already rung the bell. You can't unring the bell. I think as fast as we can run away from the bell, we should.
Well, I respect both of y'all. I've sat here for a long time and watched, watched a lot of things happen, and that lots of people were involved in, that should have been recognized and wasn't. And I just, this is the reason I felt like this was important, because some people, this part should have probably been finished, and I'll just use one person before Kathy Manas went off council, and it was not. And she was a big, big part of it, and Steve McDougal too. And I'm just not that kind of person. They put their effort into it, and I just feel like it should be done.
Madam Mayor, I, I would point out that we're not making any kind of accusations of you being a certain kind of person.
I know, I know. I'm just saying, I feel about this, because I've sat through different things, and that's the reason I felt like this policy should come forward. So at this point in time.
And I feel like, if I may just finish, I feel like if we're going to take any old plaques down, we need to take them all down, and I'd like to see what that budget would be. And I'd like to make sure we know what taxpayer money's going to be spent to reissue these plaques.
This is not about taking old plaques down.
I think there's an old adage that goes, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. And while we may not go back, and it may not be a wise use of taxpayer dollars, I think that applies here. It's never the wrong time to do the right thing. I think we all know that former Mayor McDougal played a huge role in both Virginia Hilton Park and.
I disagree with that.
Or a big role, whatever. He played a role.
You guys are making our point right now. We're here arguing over whose name is going to go on what plaque, and it's embarrassing, and I would ask that we finish this. Let's be done. Bring us back a policy. Let's vote on it.
It is right to recognize those people. You're right. I don't care about my name being up there, but if my name's going to be up there, you're right. I had nothing to do with Virginia Hilton Park or Old Mill Pond Trail, but Steve McDougal and Kathy Manas, they did, and Steve Baker as well. You know, so if, if my name's going to be up there, rightfully the other council members, we should set that precedent moving forward. And I'd, I'd end with, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing.
Todd Chevchik and Britt Paul and.
So I'm going to stop there, and we're going to adjust the staff, staff. And it does say from today going forward, not take, removing all the plaques and everything. I will explain that to the other people that were involved in those things, that we're doing the right thing now going forward. And I guess I'll ask for a motion to put this on the agenda to be voted on.
So moved.
Gavin makes a motion down here a second. No. Ron hadn't finished. Go ahead, Ron.
You want to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
And try to work out some details between now and then?
Yes.
I'll make a second to put it on the agenda.
Okay, there's a second to put it on the agenda. Any other questions before we vote? All those in favor for putting it on the agenda only, raise your right hand. And there's four and two opposed.
Next item on the agenda is just a reminder of the 2024 spring and summer meeting schedule. It's provided in front of you. It includes April 29th as our special called meeting and budget workshop. It notes our holidays in May, July, and September, and it notes the Municipal Association Annual Meeting in Greenville. In July, we'll have just one regular council meeting.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Rachel, are you tired of standing yet?
I can stand all night.
She's doing a great job. The final item of information is the goals update, the 2024 goals update that y'all put into place. There is two, three, four, five, six that have been completed, a lot of them that are being assigned, a lot of them that are in progress. So I would say congratulations to the staff for moving forward so vastly and getting a lot of this done, and continuing to work on them and making the priorities of councils important and handling them. So I thank y'all very much for that and all that y'all are doing. So are there any questions from the news media? It's gone. Are there any comments from the public regarding tonight's agenda? Any comments from town staff?
Madam Mayor, if I might, for just one moment, wanted to bring you an update on the Transparency Center. The end of the month, the 30th, we plan to have the financial transparency related to our March transactions up. And between now and then, we'll be adding some other items that we've mentioned throughout this process to the Transparency Center on our website. So encourage everyone to take a look at that for the new things that are being added as we lead up to the rollout of the monthly details.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything else from staff?
Can we ask to save that update for the next time Greg is here? I'd like it to come out better.
He'll get it on YouTube.
Okay, thank you.
I got one, Madam Mayor. Do we get a shot?
I ain't got to you yet. Would you hold up onto the staff? I might have to gabble him. Anybody else on staff? Okay, now, any comments from council?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that our excellent mayor and our town administrator will be presenting tomorrow at the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast here in Lexington, introducing our new town administrator to our small business community. And I'm sure they will do a great, great job of presenting our town. 7:30, Radius Church. Invite you guys and small business community to join if you're a member of the chamber.
I think it's standing room only is what she said while ago.
It should be. It should be. No.
I was like, great.
You got more, y'all got more pressure on you than Laura has to deliver on the amphitheater, all right?
Anybody else got anything?
There's still time, Laura. I can give you more.
Anybody else? Again, I want to say thank you to the staff. Y'all did a great job on that communications presentation. I know y'all worked hard and putting up with me, getting a lot of things ready for speeches like tomorrow, like Thursday to the Rotary School, like to 500 children or seniors at River Bluff. So y'all had a lot to do, and I appreciate y'all. Thank y'all. So this is the big moment that I think the town of Lexington and the surrounding part of Lexington has been waiting for. I want to make a very special announcement tonight that a lot of people have been waiting for. If anything comes up about Virginia Hilton Har, Park, the comments start going crazy, and they want to know, when's it going to open? Well, we finally have a date to reopen Virginia Hilton Park, and we want all of you to attend. On Saturday, May the 4th, we will host a grand reopening event. It starts at 9:00 a.m., rain or shine, in the park, which is located between Hightown Hall. And look for more details to be announced soon on our Facebook page and some special guests that will be there. So we're very excited. And Wesley, are you excited?
Yeah.
And not long, we'll be announcing the Old Mill Trail, right, Randy?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with that, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council work session for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, April the 15th, 2024, Tax Day. I just realized that when I read it that time. Without objection, we're adjourned.